Ralph.
Good morning, everybody. Start the hearing, call the hearing order. I've asked Ralph Abraham to open this with a quick prayer. Ralph?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we certainly appreciate the beautiful day you have afforded us. Thank you for the bounty that this nation provides us on a daily basis. We ask for your wisdom and understanding as we go through this hearing this week and this month, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Ralph. The hearing of the Committee on Agriculture regarding foreign subsidies jeopardizing free trade and harming American farmers will come to order. The purpose of today's hearing is to examine the high and rising foreign subsidies, tariffs, and other barriers to trade and their impacts on the American farmers and ranchers and the future of free trade. As you recall, on June 3rd, the committee held a hearing where witnesses cataloged the actions foreign, actions major foreign competitors around the world are taking to support their agriculture industries. In that hearing, we explored the findings of several studies indicating that already high foreign tariffs, subsidies, and trade barriers are on the rise. We learned that in many cases, what foreign countries are doing is patently illegal under the World Trade Organization commitments, while in other instances, foreign countries are extending support to their agricultural sectors in ways that fly below the radar of the WTO discipline. And still, in other cases, we learned of countries getting a free pass to ignore WTO rules by declaring themselves "developing," despite these countries having very mature, strong, and in some cases globally dominant agricultural sectors. Today, we're going to hear from a panel of witnesses who will testify to the very tangible impact of these foreign countries' activities on Americans, farmers, and ranchers. Based on the written testimony of our witnesses, this hearing will give those who doubt the need for U.S. farm policy a glimpse into what American farmers and ranchers are up against every single day. Their testimony is also a warning to our nation's trade negotiators that patience in a sector critical to passing future trade agreements is wearing thin. In 1993, Trade Promotion Authority, or TPA, was approved in the Senate by a vote of 76 to 16 and in the House by a vote of 295 to 126. At that time, TPA won overwhelming majorities of Democrats and Republicans, but ever in this Congress, TPA was approved in the Senate by a margin of 60 to 38 and the House by a margin of only 218 to 208. The Senate's relatively healthy vote in support of TPA this Congress betrays a significant shift that has taken place over the last 23 years. A substantial majority of Democrats in both chambers and an increasing number of Republicans oppose TPA this go-around, and of course, in the House, TPA barely passed. Now, the Trans-Pacific Partnership has just concluded, but many question whether the newly minted agreement will have to wait until a lame duck session of Congress for consideration. Some speculate that congressional consideration of TPP could just as easily slip into 2017. And short, it doesn't take a trade expert to recognize that these are not good omens for the future of our nation's trade agenda. Put simply, Americans are losing faith in our trade deals. Now, I want to be clear that my aim here is not to place blame. This is a problem that's brewing for a long time, and I'm sure there is plenty of blame to go around, but I will offer one remedy. Our government must take, must begin to take on those who are cheating on their trade commitments. These actions by our foreign competitors are undermining our trade agenda, and as we will hear in testimony today, cheating by foreign countries is also causing serious injury to our nation's farmers and ranchers. In the case of cotton farmers who are substantially excluded from the Farm Bill safety net, these producers have been whipsawed by Communist China's erratic policies. China has driven global cotton prices to record highs only to then send them to a total freefall. Despite these circumstances, there's little to no help for the American cotton producers made available under our Farm Bill. There are a limited number of things that members of Congress can do to draw attention to this serious situation. First, we can highlight the cheating going on around the world and to know it is harming the American people, jobs, and our economy, much like we're going to do today. Although perhaps in the future we'll need to explore taking more formal legislative action to ensure our point is made and our rights under various trade agreements are enforced. In this regard, I really want to commend U.S. sugar farmers for banding together and successfully stopping the illegal dumping that was occurring back in 2013. Second, in the case of agriculture, we can maintain a strong U.S. farm policy, and when warranted, we can further strengthen that policy in order to give our farmers a fighting chance against the cheating that is going on. For the good of free trade, for the good of our farmers and ranchers, and for the good of our nation's economy and jobs, business as usual is no longer good enough. Things must change. Our agreements must be enforced. I hope that one day our trade agenda is able to zero out subsidies, tariffs, and other trade barriers around the world, including those here at home. But until that day comes, a reality we cannot, becomes a reality, we cannot and will not unilaterally disarm America's farmers and ranchers. With that, a recognized ranking member, Peters, for any comments you would like to make. Colin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm pleased that we can follow up on what I thought was a good discussion in June. As I said then, I think we need to keep a close eye on how other countries subsidize agriculture, and this is especially important to keep in mind during our debates on the farm safety net. We need a level playing field if we're going to be able to be competitive in the global market. Today's hearing will cover a broad array of subsidies ranging from dairy support programs in Canada and the EU, sugar subsidies in Brazil, Thailand, India, Mexico and the EU, and subsidies for wheat, corn, rice, and cotton in China, India, and Turkey. We hope we can also continue the discussion that began our last hearing on this issue about the impact of advanced developing countries increasing their subsidies. Again, I don't think it's fair for these developing countries, no matter how advanced, that they can designate themselves for special treatment. I also think it's time for the United States to start challenging those countries that failed to meet their WTO commitments. So I look forward to testimony and yield back.
Thank you, gentlemen, your comments. I want to welcome, oh, excuse me. The Chair would request that other members submit their opening statements for the record so our witnesses may begin their testimony and to ensure there is adequate time for our questions. I'd like to welcome to our witness stables today Dr. Dermot Hayes, professor and pioneer chair in the agribusiness at Iowa State University, Ames, Iowa; Dr. Gary Adams, president, chief executive officer of National Cotton Council, Cordova, Tennessee; Mr. Jack Roney, director of economics and policy analysis at American Sugar Alliance here in Arlington, Virginia; Mr. Jaime Castaneda, senior vice president, strategic initiatives and trade policy at National Milk Producers Federation, Arlington, Virginia. Dr. Hayes, the floor is yours for five minutes.
Chairman Conway, ranking member Peterson, and members of the committee, thank you for your continued attention to this important issue. As you mentioned, Craig Thorne documented subsidies in China, India, and Turkey last June and showed that those countries are manipulating their internal markets to achieve self-sufficiency or greater. And the way they do that is to subsidize inputs such as fertilizer and seed, and on the output side, they manipulate their domestic markets so that the farmers receive a price that is typically higher than the world price. As a follow-up to that study, National Wheat Associates asked us to run a model to calculate the impact of that on the world wheat market. The model we used is called the Card Fabry Model. It's been built at Iowa State and the University of Missouri over the last 30 years, and Dr. Adams, to my left here, spent many years working on the crop side of that model. It's, I think the model is conservative, and it's been proven to be reliable. So, in one scenario we ran, we removed the input subsidies and the domestic market supports in four countries and examined what would happen to U.S. wheat prices and exports. And the results suggested that U.S. wheat prices would, in 2013, have been about 5% greater and U.S. exports about 9% greater. So those countries alone are costing the U.S. wheat industry about $1 billion. We did not do those numbers for corn, but I'm familiar with the corn policies in those countries, and I would argue that the impact on the corn market has been even greater. And the other point I'd like to make is that we in the U.S., we do have domestic support programs, but in the last Farm Bill, we eliminated the distortions caused by those programs by tying the payments to historic acres and historic yields rather than current acres and current yields. So there's a vast difference from an economic perspective between a program that guarantees a price for every bushel produced in a particular country compared to one where the support's based on historic production and historic yields. Economists would say that that's not a starting program. I'll finish my remarks by the following. Being in Iowa, I sensed an enormous amount of support for TPP. It's a good deal, especially for livestock producers, but there has to be an understanding that when we make these deals, that people will follow through and police them, and I suspect that support from farm states may be enough to push that deal over the edge. But it's important for those producers who lead those charges to know that they can then expect the benefits that have been modeled and predicted. And I think it's great that you, your committee, has decided to ensure that these commitments are being met because in the absence of that, you would lose the trust of the producers and their support for these agreements. Thank you.
Thank Dr. Hayes. Dr. Adams, five minutes.
Well, thank you, Chairman Conway, ranking member Peterson, and members of the committee, for the opportunity to present the views of the National Cotton Council regarding government support conveyed in other countries and the resulting impacts on U.S. cotton producers. Burdensome global stocks, stagnant world demand, a stronger U.S. dollar, and lower man-made fiber prices are contributing to cotton prices that are at their lowest level since 2009. U.S. producers responded to the current market situation with 2015 plantings of eight-and-a-half million acres, the lowest since 1983. U.S. cotton production of 13.3 million bales is just 12% of world production. In recent years, while U.S. government support for cotton has declined, government intervention in other countries has been on the increase. Between 2010 and 2015, India's minimum support price increased by 52%, with the current level between 70 and 80 cents per pound. Cotton farmers in India also benefit from subsidized fertilizer prices. The impacts of these subsidies are evident. Over the past decade, India's cotton area rose by 35%, while area outside of India fell by more than 20%. China offers both tremendous challenges and tremendous opportunities. China's fiber policies have been one of the largest factors influencing cotton markets over the past five years. From 2011 through 2013, China supported its cotton farmers by purchasing vast amounts of production into government reserves at a price well above the world market. During that same time, China annually imported between 14 and 24 million bales from the world market. After three years of amassing more than 50 million bales in government reserves, China in 2014 instituted a target price program in the Xinjiang province with the current support level set at $1.40 per pound. At various times during the year, China will announce additional import quota above the WTO required level. However, the process for determination of additional quota is not transparent. Due to the government-owned reserves, China is limiting import quotas to the minimum TRQ of 4.1 million bales. As a result, cotton imports in 2015 are expected to be the lowest since 2002. Pakistan, the fourth-largest cotton producer, operates a minimum support price estimated between 65 and 78 cents per pound. Cotton producers in Brazil receive support through a marketing program based on guaranteed prices. The program supported almost 60% of the 2014 crop with a minimum guaranteed price between 55 and 70 cents per pound. Brazil also provides support through production financing with subsidized interest rates. In recent years, Turkey has been the second-largest export customer for U.S. cotton. Unfortunately, over the past year, Turkish authorities have been investigating U.S. cotton exporting companies to determine if U.S. cotton is being dumped into the Turkish market. While we do not believe there is any economic basis for the claims, the uncertainty of the ongoing investigation is dampening interest in U.S. cotton by Turkish mills as current sales for this marketing year are just one-third of year-ago levels. U.S. cotton farmers are competing with international cotton producers that are benefiting from higher support levels. A November 2014 report by ICAC estimated average direct assistance to cotton production across all countries at 26 cents per pound. However, for the U.S., the average support was just 7 cents per pound. Notwithstanding the current policies that underscore the challenging condition facing U.S. producers, there are proposals within the WTO that would lead to a further imbalance in the situation. We oppose any efforts to further alter U.S. cotton policy in the WTO's upcoming ministerial. We believe that the actions already taken by the United States with respect to cotton policy should be more than sufficient to allow U.S. negotiators to resist any further calls for concessions on cotton. As Ambassador Froman noted before the Senate Finance Committee this past January, a defensive posture regarding U.S. cotton support is outdated and justifies a shift in focus to other countries' status regarding their WTO obligations. We continue to urge U.S. negotiators to push other countries to be as current and as transparent as the United States with their domestic support notifications. Those continuing to call for U.S. policy changes fail to recognize the actions and impacts of other major cotton-producing countries. I encourage this committee and our negotiators to hold firmly to the position that ag markets have changed over the past decade and that U.S. cotton policy has evolved in ways that far exceed the previous demands within the WTO. A cotton-specific solution focused on developed countries does not address the realities of today's global fiber markets. And to groups that continue to criticize U.S. cotton support, our message is simple: Our programs are not having a detrimental impact on world markets or producers in other countries. countries. Under the current farm law, U.S. cotton farmers are even more attuned to market conditions. And for the U.S. cotton industry to sustain production and infrastructure, it's imperative that production and trade policies in other countries not put U.S. farmers at a disadvantage. Thank you for the chance to make this statement. I look forward to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Mr. Roney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Peterson and members of the committee, for convening this important hearing. I'm Jack Roney, economist at American Sugar Alliance. The ASA is a national coalition of sugar beet and sugarcane growers, processors and refiners. We grow sugar beets in 11 states and sugarcane in four, and overall, we generate 142,000 good-paying jobs in 22 states. The U.S. sugar industry is a major player in the world sugar market. The U.S. is the world's fifth-largest producer, fourth-largest consumer and second-largest importer. We provide guaranteed import access to 41 countries. This makes us one of the world's most open markets for sugar. We're good at what we do. The U.S. is the 20th-lowest cost among the 95 largest sugar-producing nations. Most of these are developing nations, are developing cane producers with far lower government-imposed costs for worker, consumer, environmental compliance than we face. So if we're so efficient, why do we need a U.S. sugar policy? The answer is in the tremendous distortion of the so-called world sugar price. This chart tracks the world average cost of producing sugar over the past 25 years. The cost has averaged about 18 cents per pound over those years. If I added world average sugar prices to this chart, what would you expect? Certainly, we would expect prices averaging above the cost of production, high enough to keep producers in business. But here's the reality: The so-called world price, the red line, has averaged just 12 cents, almost always well below production cost. The 24-, 25-year average production cost is 50% higher than the average price. With prices so far below cost, how can any sugar producer survive? The answer is in the domestic markets where most sugar is produced and sold. Governments maintain much higher prices than the world price so their farmers can stay in business. Only about a quarter of sugar is sold at the world dump price; the remaining three-quarters is sold at much higher levels. This chart shows world dump market refined sugar futures prices over the past decade. This red line, it averages about 21 cents. The green line shows the actual wholesale prices at which most sugar is sold, much higher, 31 cents, nearly 50% higher than the dump price. And the purple line shows the developed country, the developed country average prices, averaging 41 cents, are nearly double the world dump market price. This, then, with price protection from their governments, is how sugar farmers stay in business. None can survive at the so-called world price. How does the U.S. compare? The U.S. wholesale refined sugar prices are currently about 33 cents per pound. That's right at the world average and well below the average in other developed countries. As you would expect, with our wholesale prices at or below world levels, U.S. consumer prices are also well below world levels. As this chart shows, the world average retail sugar price, the green bar, is 20% higher than the U.S. price, the red bar. The developed country average consumer price for sugar, the yellow bar, is 29% higher than ours. With sugar policy in place, American consumers get a great deal on sugar. What keeps the world dump market prices low are the subsidies around the world that encourage overproduction and the unloading of surpluses on the world market. This chart shows the world's major sugar exporters, all subsidized to some degree, some more than others. The prime examples: Brazil, with about $3 billion per year of support via cane ethanol program and massive government debt relief programs; Thailand, which has quadrupled its exports in the past decade through high government-set prices and other inducements to overproduce and export; India, which is violating WTO rules by subsidizing its producers to export their surplus sugar problem onto the world market; Mexico, whose government-owned mills have long dominated their market. Mexico exploited its free-trade access to the U.S. market under NAFTA to flood our country with subsidized dumped sugar and collapsed our market in 2013. The U.S. government responded with subsidy and dumping duties at high levels. The U.S. and Mexican governments have since worked out agreements to suspend the duties and resume sugar trade with Mexico. We hope these suspension agreements will remain in place and maintain market stability. What is the solution to the distorted world sugar market? Multilateral reform, all countries, all subsidies. We strongly support Congressman Yojo's zero-for-zero resolution. We pledge to eliminate U.S. sugar policy when foreign countries eliminate theirs. With a level playing field, we can compete and compete well. But to weaken or surrender our sugar policy before global reform, as some sugar-using corporations have proposed, would be unilateral disarmament, sacrificing good American jobs in favor of imported subsidized foreign sugar. We must maintain the successful U.S. sugar policy as it is until foreign sugar subsidies can be reined in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee, for convening this hearing and for your support for efficient American sugar farmers.
Thank you, Mr. Roney. Mr. Castaneda?
Thank you, Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Peterson and members of the committee. Thank you for inviting me to testify today on foreign subsidies in the dairy sector. My name is Jaime Castaneda, and I'm a Senior Vice President of the National Milk Producers Federation. I work closely with the U.S. Dairy Export Council in defending the dairy industry interests on trade matters. Mr. Chairman, as you will see in our reading submission, a wide range of programs are used to support dairy sectors around the world. Some involve direct aids to producers, but many are more indirect, using import protection or regulatory measures to give domestic producers an advantage over competitors in their own market and globally. This is important to our industry because we are now competing in that global market. The U.S. has gone from exporting less than $1 billion in dairy products in the year 2000 to exporting a record 7.1 billion in 2014, an increase of 625%. An important part of this success has been agreements that have lowered and removed barriers to our exports. However, they have done little to constrain the use of domestic supports in the dairy sector. The negotiations on this type of support takes place in the WTO, such as the Doha Round, but those talks have been on life support since 2008. Although many developing countries provide direct support to their dairy sectors, their greatest protection often takes the form of restrictions on import access. But developed countries are the biggest providers of both direct and indirect supports to their dairy sectors, and the EU is certainly the largest. All EU farmers, including dairy producers, are supported through the EU's Common Agricultural Policy, which represents over a third of the total EU budget. Specifically, the EU dairy programs include, among others, a direct or basic payment previously known as the single payment, an ad hoc system providing subsidies for the private storage of dairy products, a price support program for butter and skimmed milk powder, and most recently, a substantial package of emergency aid provided to EU dairy farmers due to low domestic prices and other supports under the auspices of rural development. Taken collectively, EU subsidy programs in the dairy sector provide a substantial assistance package aimed at ensuring profitability of European dairy farmers. But such aid to dairy is not enough for the EU. In recent years, the EU has undertaken an effort to block the use of many commonly-used product names. What better way to impede or prevent imports of a given product than to ban the use of its name? An American producer of feta or Parmesan cheese, for example, can no longer sell such products in the EU and in some foreign countries, despite the fact that those names have been widely and generically used around the world for many years. Now let me switch to our trading partner from the north, Canada. Canada maintains one of the most tightly-guarded dairy markets in the world by imposing astronomically high tariffs on imported products. Canadian dairy tariffs typically range from 250% to 300%. The purpose of such tariffs is to protect Canada's supply-managed price support system. The support program and the tariff regime are inseparable and highly effective forms of domestic support. Yet, what is more disturbing is the fact that Canada has also found ways to restrict even the limited amount of access it has already agreed to provide through its NAFTA and WTO commitments, which we enumerate in our written testimony. When talking about foreign subsidies and protection, India stands out, too. One of the biggest problems with India's subsidies is the support through various methods, but more importantly, India's support through regulatory barriers that prevent the importation of dairy products. Finally, a key support that hurts us in global markets is the monopolistic structure of New Zealand's dairy industry, where one company controls approximately 85% of the milk produced in that country, and until recently, up to 90%. This monopolistic structure grants an immense advantage to New Zealand dairy product exports, and it is of significant concern to the U.S. dairy industry. Very few companies in any economic sector in the world have the level of market share that New Zealand has obtained through domestic policies. We have provided information on other countries in our submission, but in the interest of time, I will stop here and thank you for the opportunity to provide our views on this important subject.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Chair, remind members that they'll be recognized for questioning in order to send your order for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in your order of arrival. I appreciate everybody's understanding. And with that, I'll recognize myself for five minutes. Given I represent an awful lot of cotton farmers, I'll ask Dr. Adams to expand on your testimony. Can you talk to us about what the impact is on the ground? You mentioned the shortage or reduction in the number of acres planted this year. Can you talk to us about the broader impacts on rural communities and other economic things that are going on out in the real world as a result of these distorted policies that have hammered our cotton producers?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for that question. And I did mention the impacts that we've seen on area with it being the lowest since 1983. But I think the other thing to keep in mind when we look at cotton production in rural communities is it is in many areas, in many locations, and your district certainly being one of them. You know, it's a cornerstone of the rural economy because when it gets to the farm gate, there's still the gins, the warehousing, the processing and distribution of cotton, as well as the cotton seed that comes from the production that generates a tremendous amount of economic activity. I know there's a study by Louisiana State University that looked at the impacts on the rural economy when, in the loss and in infrastructure that can occur when you see reduced cotton production. We know that every dollar that gets turned over in the rural economy by another four to five times that amount. So it's certainly a tremendous impact on the rural economy when we see just that revenue from cotton production fall. And we've already seen some very significant impacts in some parts of the cotton belt. In the mid-south region around Memphis, we've seen a decline in infrastructure and a decline in production. Out west, we've seen similar declines. Certainly, our concern is when we look at the returns from cotton production today and we compare that to cost of production, you know, we understand why area adjusted lower this year. Our concern is we look into the future, it's just going to become increasingly difficult on cotton producers as they look at where prices now sit relative to cost of production.
You worked us through a litany of the price supports or the price subsidies or programs. You also mentioned input subsidies. Can you equate that to an equivalent cost, you know, per-pound subsidy of cotton producers for the fertilizer or other things, seed? Do you have that number by chance?
Well, I think what we have are some numbers that perhaps not on a per-pound, but we can talk about some things on a per-acre basis. And I mentioned a couple of the input subsidies. One in Brazil would be on interest rate subsidies and getting lower interest rates than the current market rates, and have seen estimates that would put that as much as roughly $30 per acre in interest savings. Then when we look at India, for example, is going to be, they're the largest producer, they're a significant competitor in the export market to U.S. cotton, and then we look at the numbers that have been associated with their fertilizer subsidies across, you know, across their cotton production. We were estimating numbers that were approaching $100 per acre in input subsidies. So again, very significant in terms of affecting the cost of production side, efforts that just continue to keep India more competitive in markets.
I guess. You were pretty clear on your statements about the ministerial coming up in Nairobi. Would you reiterate one more time, just for the record, how, what cotton's position is? And is it shared by a broader group of ag interests that you're aware of?
Well, certainly when we look at, we look at cotton, and I do think when we, not to speak for the broader ag group, but I certainly think that U.S. negotiators and the U.S. government position has been that as we look at agricultural markets in general, the world is much different today than it was going back to 2008 when we had the last, really, the last meaningful text that was developed. And in that text, there were, you know, frankly, too many concessions, I think, for countries that qualify or want to qualify themselves as a developing country. We know that progress has been difficult in the broader ag negotiations, and our concern is that that just turns the attention to, more and more, to cotton, and that if there can't be a broader ag agreement, then efforts will be to look for some cotton-specific agreement. That is not an outcome that we want to see because our concern is it's going to disproportionately try to impact policies in developed countries such as the United States. But I think first, we've got to step back and really look at how developed countries compare to developing countries and really rethinking that playing field as we head into this ministerial.
All right, thank you. I'll yield back. Mr. Peterson for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Roney, I, you know, agree that it would be wonderful if we get to a 0-0 subsidy situation in sugar. And I applaud you for what you guys did with the Mexico situation and the successful outcome and having worked through that with you. My question is, I'm a little bit skeptical about how we would ever get to a situation where we actually could be sure that these countries got rid of their subsidies. You know, there's so much disinformation put out there. And you did a great job here today laying out the reality, but you've got people in the sugar industry or sugar users putting out a disinformation propaganda. You've got people in ethanol doing it, you know? And then you've got Brazil, which takes those two and uses that situation by lowering the price of ethanol when they can to subsidize sugar and vice versa, you know, and all the other stuff that's going on. So the question is, how would you ever, how would we ever be able to assure if, say that everybody agreed tomorrow they're going to get rid of their subsidies, how could we be sure that they have, you know, given they're manipulating currency in Brazil and, you know, all of this stuff? Do you think we could ever be sure that these countries weren't pulling something behind our back and we'd be able to root it out?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I appreciate your skepticism, which I think is very well-placed. I think it will be extremely difficult to get foreign countries to roll back their agricultural subsidies in general, sugar in particular. But the only way to potentially achieve that is at the WTO where you have all countries at the table and all programs on the table, developed countries and developing countries. Then you get to certainly some problems with enforcement down the road. I think it's a noble goal to work in that direction. U.S. sugar industry supports that. We could compete on a level playing field if we got there. But you're right, that level playing field is very hard to attain, and that is why we make our argument to Congress and why we appreciate Congress's support, that until we get to that level playing field, we need to retain the U.S. sugar policy we have in place now.
So, you know, how realistic is it to get rid of the developing nation status for people like Brazil? You know, I mean, they are not a developing nation when it comes to agriculture.
Yeah, that's a real problem in the WTO, that's self, the countries are self-designating. They regard themselves as a developing country even if they have one of the most advanced agricultural systems in the world. And that's another disadvantage that we've got to tackle in that multilateral process.
Can we ever, you know, is there anything on the table to get rid of that in the WTO process? Is anybody working on that?
I'm not really aware that there is, Congressman, but that's certainly something that we've got to keep pushing for at every opportunity.
Mr. Castaneda, the Canadian situation. You know, this TPP, the thing that really sticks in my craw is that we're letting them keep this supply-management system, you know? And my question is, you know, I see what they're doing, and they're protecting their market and, you know, apparently, we're allowing them to do that. But my concern is Canadians are now becoming, you know, big players in our processing market. You know, they're now buying up all kinds of companies, and they've moved up, one of them is second, I think, in processing in the United States, right? So is this happening because they have the supply-management system and they have a guaranteed profit and they can't reinvest it in their industry in Canada? Is that why they're coming to the U.S.?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Peterson. I can't for sure say why the reason that they are coming to the United States. I can't for sure say why the reason that they are coming to the United States. One of the things that I can assert is the fact that they do have a guarantee margin in Canada and also the fact that they don't have any opportunity to grow in Canada. We have seen not only Canadian companies coming to the United States, but European companies. And you can see that actually they expand and they grow in the U.S. as opposed to in their own countries. The problem that we have with Canada is, as I've stated in my written testimony, is the fact that they're constantly changing the role, the game of the play of the game. They constantly changing the rules in which how we export into Canada. That's something that we consistently insist to the U.S. government to have an agreement with Canada can prevent that from happening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trent Kelly, Mississippi, five minutes.
Good morning, Dr. Adams. I flew in with you yesterday and got to meet you on the plane. And of course, Mississippi has a lot of cotton, so most of my questions will be directed to you. In your testimony, you talked about the situation in India and how they've grown as a producer and an exporter and subsidizer of cotton production. Can you talk more about how their support is structured, how that compares to the support in the United States for cotton and what the resulting impact is on U.S. producers?
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you, Congressman, for that question. And when we look at India specifically, we look at how they convey support to growers. They do it through a minimum support price program. Essentially, think about it as acting as a floor on the market. So the government of India, through an agency, will essentially step in and purchase cotton off of the market at that minimum support price in order to create a price floor guarantee back to their growers. I mean, it's, in some ways, that's a key difference in terms of relative to comparing it to, you know, support in the United States that generally allows market prices to go where they're going to go. This is much more intervention into the market to try to set a floor so they keep that support at, as the minimum. And that, as I mentioned in my testimony, has been a price support that has increased over time, certainly to ensure that they continue to keep production at a level that right now is approximately thirty million bales. Essentially, in the world crop, one out of every four bales are produced in India and they're an exporter anywhere between five and seven million bales per year. So I think that's the impact is we don't see, in times of low prices, we don't see their acreage adjust because of that price floor. We continue to see them being a presence in the export market. And I think in times of low prices, it's due to the presence of that support program.
And I failed to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the witnesses for being here. Sometimes I get excited to be asking these questions to such people who have such knowledge in the area. And this is to any of you, Dr. Hayes or any of the other people. How do you feel like the TPP, from your point of view, do you feel like it's good for your industry? Do you think it's good that Congress support the TPP? And if you can explain why, please.
I haven't seen all the details of the agreement, but those I have seen are good for the commodities that are produced in Iowa. In particular, the Japanese gate price system practically disappears over a long period of time and we get access into nineteen million consumers in Vietnam for beef, pork, and the products of corn and soybeans. So it's unambiguously good for a state such as Iowa that has a lot of land because the deal is with countries like Japan and Vietnam that are land scarce.
And final question, Dr. Adams. China's cotton subsidies that you described are egregious and damaging to the United States and world producers of cotton. What is the outlook for those subsidy programs being reduced or eliminated?
Good question. And I will say, we certainly continue to see evolution in the way China's structuring their policies because they went from a period of, from 2011 through 2013, essentially purchasing cotton off the market, putting it in government reserves and establishing a price floor. That has evolved now in 2014 to be a target price program applied to a portion of their country. It's continuing to evolve in 2015. It's still in place. It went through some adjustments. Frankly, I think they're continuing to seek out ways to provide support to producers. I had the pleasure to attend a conference in China back in June. This was a key topic that was talked about within their industry is, you know, how do they evolve support over time? And the other question they have is what do they do with the fifty to sixty million bales of cotton stocks that they've amassed over that period of building reserves? And I think they're still struggling with how to move that cotton back into the market or what to do with it because it's right now hanging over the market.
Mr. Chairman and ranking member and witnesses, I thank you for your time and I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Del Benny for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to all of you for being with us today. Mr. Castaneda, you talked about the EU and some of the challenges there. And I wondered if you could compare the level of support that EU is providing to its dairy producers to the support we're providing under the new U.S. dairy programs?
Thank you so much, Congresswoman, and thank you for your support of the dairy industry at all times. I would offer the committee to give you an extended comparison, but today I can tell you that you can see how much the EU have been doing in the last couple of years, including this year, in supporting their dairy industry with the emergency aid and storage aids and a number of other elements compared to our programs in which the U.S. dairy farmers have only two programs. One is the Margin Protection Program and the Donation Program, which the Donation Program has not been implemented. And the Margin Protection Program, in fact, if you look at the number, it's not official, but it seems to be that the U.S. dairy farmers pay to the government as opposed to receive from the government, pay to the government over fifty million dollars under their Margin Protection Program. And the other element that the U.S. dairy farmers have is a self-support cooperative working together, which has nothing to do with the government. So as you can see, while the United States dairy industry and dairy farmers community is supporting themselves, for the most part, the EU is heavily, heavily subsidized by the EU government.
And you talked about kind of de facto support with geographical indicators. Can you quantify that in some way or give us some examples?
We are working on an economic analysis and we hope to actually have that soon. But at some point, the grocery manufacturers of America several years ago and our analysis seems to actually, we could actually see up to billions of dollars in losses, not only from the direct producers of these cheese products, meat products, but also on producers who actually sell this, the milk to the processors.
And are there other countries outside of the EU that also are providing kind of similar or other types of de facto support or other things that support?
There are many, many countries, as stated, Canada is one of them, India certainly, and many countries like Brazil, Ecuador, Turkey, they're always finding ways to, through regulatory or through other methods, to protect their dairy industry. So it's a constant battle to try to prevent these countries from encouraging new barriers against U.S. dairy products.
And you talked about this a little bit with Mr. Peterson. In your initial review of the Trans-Pacific Partnership, and you talked about Canada specifically, but if you look at it more broadly, kind of, how do you think, what's the impact, you know, in terms of leveling the playing field potentially for our domestic producers?
Thank you so much for that question. We still think that the jury's still out. We haven't seen all the details. Dairy, unlike other commodities, we have hundreds of tariff lines, so we're not a hundred percent sure yet what's the outcome with every single tariff line in Japan, as well as what the last-minute concessions were given to other countries. But we certainly have determined that this is not an agreement that the dairy industry would oppose, but we still trying to figure it out what grade we give them at the end.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Hayes, one of the things that we hear frequently is, you know, underreporting or lack of reporting in some cases of domestic supports that other countries are providing, lack of reporting to WTO, and that that underreporting is having a big impact and maybe inconsistent with WTO rules. And so I wondered if you could, you know, tell us whether you think this is a widespread problem or not and kind of your overall view of what needs to be done to address that.
I think economists in developed rule of law countries do a good job of reporting. Turkey has not reported recently at all. Brazil and India have reported, but there are flaws in how they did that. And let me give an example. If China were to buy twenty percent of the corn crop to maintain high corn prices, then they attribute the support only to the twenty percent rather than acknowledge that that brought up prices for the other eighty percent of the crop. So there are issues in both the timing of reporting and the quality of the numbers.
My time's expired. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I yield back.
Dr. Binecek, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Roni, I have a couple of questions for you. As you know, sugar is a pretty big business in Michigan. And, you know, this International Trade Commission just voted to affirm that these Mexican subsidies were really causing the U.S. sugar industry to suffer. So can you tell me about how that affects my district and specifically in Michigan? What is exactly the result of that?
Thank you, Congressman. That is an extremely important result for us, for all sugar producers in the United States, Michigan and elsewhere, really for two reasons. Number one, it reaffirmed our contention that Mexico is responsible for collapsing the U.S. sugar market in 2013. And we're not surprised by that result because the Department of Commerce, in its final determination on the extent of subsidizing and the extent of dumping by the Mexicans, they came up with combined margins of eighty percent. It's just, it's just mind-boggling, the extent to which Mexico is taking advantage of NAFTA-free trade to subsidize and dump on our market. The second way that, this is very important, is that what it leaves in place are the suspension agreements that the U.S. and Mexican governments negotiated to restore trade with Mexico duty-free. But now we're going to balance the amount of sugar that Mexico can send with how much we need. That's very simple, the common sense type of approach.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand. Tell me, make it in simple terms for me so I understand what this actually means. What's this going to mean? What are we going to be able to do about it? I mean...
Well, what it means, Congressman, is that we can now expect, as long as these suspension agreements stay in place, and they are undergoing an appeal that will be decided in 2016, as long as those stay in place, we can expect a stable market in the United States. We can expect to be able to avoid more dumping on the U.S. market by Mexico. So I think it's very important for the financial horizon for our producers, looking forward and for their lenders to know that as long as we have sugar policy and we have the suspension agreements, we're looking at a stable market for years to come.
Let me ask a question about the TPP. Has this kind of changed the way this kind of trade subsidies work in the future in the world sugar market?
Congressman, the problem with FTAs, with the bilateral regional free trade agreements, is that they don't address subsidies in those countries. They're purely focused on market access, tariffs and quotas. And so they're not a vehicle to address subsidies in those countries. And I think that's, in some ways, it's the biggest flaw in the bilateral or regional approach. And it makes sense because if you're doing a bilateral agreement with one other country, you're not going to eliminate all your price supports for any commodity just relative to that country because then everyone's going to take advantage of it.
What's the solution to that problem?
Well, I think the only solution, Congressman, is in the WTO, the World Trade Organization. The DAW around has been stalled for some time, but it is trying to address all subsidies around the world. And even within that framework, as we were discussing before, developing countries are often able to sidestep the disciplines that the WTO is meant to impose. But that's the only approach. You've got to get all countries at the table and all programs on the table.
Is there any sign that these kind of subsidies are slowing down on their own or market forces are making that happen? Or what's actually happening around the world?
No, sir. In the world of sugar, the opposite is happening. As the world sugar price is dropping, we're seeing countries stepping up their subsidies. They have to, to keep their farmers afloat. As I tried to show earlier, the world price for sugar is running about half the world average cost of producing sugar. So for any country to stay in business, they've got to subsidize their producers and they're doing it more and more generously the more the world price drops. So I'm afraid the opposite is happening. We're not seeing any diminishment in foreign subsidies.
Thank you, Mr. Roni. I'll yield back, remaining of my time.
Jim, I yield back. Ms. Adams from North Carolina, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, gentlemen, for your testimony. Dr. Adams, I appreciated the opportunity to meet with cotton farmers from North Carolina earlier this spring. Cotton is grown throughout my state, including the 12th district that I represent there. Since U.S. cotton has been the subject of much litigation with Brazil at the World Trade Organization over the last decade, what recommendations would you have for how to approach the upcoming WTO session from a U.S. cotton perspective?
Thank you for that question. I think as we look at, we look at the ministerial and the focus on cotton in the WTO, certainly there's an opportunity there for, to really focus on making sure that countries are current in their notifications and also transparent in the support they're provided. There are what's referred to as dedicated discussions that were established out of the last ministerial, dedicated discussions on cotton, that were an opportunity to really, for countries to dig in, so to speak, and evaluate what's being done in countries. And frankly, as I can tell, there hasn't been a lot of progress in that front. So there's still work to be done there just to understand and get everybody to the point where they're talking in the same terms and they're notifying and they're transparent. I think, though, until that's done, you know, we don't want to see any additional concessions on cotton until we have that stepping off point. And certainly, as we plan toward the next ministerial, we don't see there's any need for any cotton-specific outcome within that ministerial.
Okay, thank you. As a follow-up, what is the National Cotton Council's view on the finalized agreement of the TPP, both from a growers' and a manufacturer's perspective?
Thank you. Yes, when we look at TPP, and I think we've, as the negotiations went along, we always understood that really the focus of any outcome of TPP would be much more on the textile manufacturing side, probably directly so, more so on the growers. Most of the trade that occurred in cotton between the countries involved was generally occurring with very low duties and no quotas. But on the textile side, it can be a much different story, particularly with Vietnam being a participant in the TPP negotiations. That's always been a concern of the industry. You know, we certainly appreciated that as the negotiations went along, U.S. negotiators talked to the textile association, talked to the cotton industry, so they understood our concerns. In terms of our view of the final agreement, right now, we're just still a bit of a wait-and-see mode until we see all the specific agreements and all the specifics, particularly from the textile side. We do understand there's a yarn-forward rule of origin, which we find to be very important. So I think it's moving in a positive direction. But there's some details that we need to see on the final agreement before establishing a final word.
Okay. Finally, Dr. Adams, your statement covered some of the current challenges facing U.S. cotton producers. But how can you, would you please elaborate on the economic condition of the U.S. cotton industry and what the outlook is, given the current prices and production levels?
Now, this, you know, the market situation we're in right now, we're seeing prices trade, futures markets trading in the low to mid-sixty cent range, and that's, we, that's certainly much lower than where we were two or three years ago. Returns for cotton production are off about twenty-five percent from where they were 2010 to 2013. Most of the producers that I talked to, then unless they have above-average yields, you know, this crop's not going to meet their cost of production. I think that's the challenge they face. And unfortunately, right now, until we can see, you know, some recovery in demand, some adjustment in the supply and demand situation, it looks to us like the pressure... adjustment in the supply and demand situation, it looks to us like the pressure's going to be there as we head into 2016. So I think we're setting up for a challenging environment on the cotton side for the next year or two, and that, I think, just underscores some of the financial pressures that are out there.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Chair, I yield back.
General Leader yields back. Ms. Crawford, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I thank the members of the panel for being here today. Dr. Adams, you alluded to cotton subsidies, China's cotton subsidies, and I would agree that they're egregious and damaging to US and world producers of cotton. What's the outlook? Do you see that being reduced or eliminated at any point?
I don't see it being eliminated. I think China's going to go with, you know, they're probably going to take the view that they want to provide support to their agricultural and support to their producers. Now, will it be modified over the coming years? I think that's a question they're still dealing with, because they've gone through some fairly significant changes in their policy. But I don't see it being eliminated. I think they'll continue to want to provide support to their producers. Hopefully, it'll be done in a way that does not provide distortions to the markets. I think the big question that they have to deal with, too, in addition to how they support their producers, is what do they do with that 50 to 60 million bales that are sitting in stocks? Because that comes at a cost, and it's overhanging the market.
Let me ask you about that. 63 million bales in government-owned stocks in China and expected to rise to 68 million bales. Are we pretty sure on those numbers? Because I'm a little concerned about their reporting and how that may impact the market. And then also, have we seen those levels before? And talk about what the market impacts are going to be.
Yeah, we have, short answer is, we have not seen those levels before. And then, but going back to your first question, there's always an uncertainty around any of the data estimates that come out of China. I think the data's better than it was a few years ago, and it's probably, we have, I think, some sense of how much was purchased, or reports of how much was purchased into the reserves, and some idea of how much was auctioned. So I think there's a better idea there. Now, is it 60 million bales? Could it be off by 5 or 10 million bales? Possibly so. I think one of the uncertainties that is also associated with that is not only the quantity of the cotton, but the quality of the cotton. Some of it's been there for four or five years. But nonetheless, it is leading them with those reserves basically there to come on the market. It makes them withdraw and be a smaller importer of cotton than they were a few years ago. That's one of the most significant impacts.
You said maybe a 5 to 10 million bale variance there. That's pretty significant. How does that manifest in terms of market?
I think what it manifests itself into is uncertainty in terms of, you know, can you put a dollar value on it? I think that's a challenge. But certainly, as the market participants look at the conditions, they're always trying to assess what's going on in China and what will happen. So yes, those are big numbers when we talk about it, and it is a, you know, it's an uncertainty just in terms of how they choose to manage that going forward.
Let me ask you this. I've got, I want to get into a deal with Turkey, but what would you advise that we might be able to do here from a policy perspective that might force China to report more accurately? Is there anything that we can do?
I think we just can continue to urge US negotiators and those in Geneva that represent the US at the WTO to continue to push. And I know they have been over this past year. In fact, I think there was just recently a press story out earlier this week on some of the discussions that go on between the US and other countries, namely China and India. I still see that as the first step, is to continue to push there and get an explanation on the table so that we at least have a better understanding of where we are.
Let me ask you this about Turkey. Anti-dumping, countervailing duties investigation that Turkey initiated against US cotton exporting companies. And I understand it's rare for a government to self-initiate a case, and there may be some political motivation for that in retaliation for US anti-dumping and countervailing duties on Turkish steel. But if you wouldn't mind, give us an update on what's going on there and how the cotton industry's been involved, what this committee might do to help resolve the case favorably.
Thank you. Yes, we're a year into that investigation. It was self-initiated, the first time that Turkey has self-initiated an investigation. They have, Turkish officials have requested, they've sent requests of two questionnaires to our exporting companies. So they've had, our exporting companies have had to submit a tremendous amount of data on all of their transaction-by-transaction data for a certain period of, not only their sales to Turkey, but their sales to other markets as well. So it's been a burden from that standpoint. We, as an association representing the industry, we have status as an interested party. We've made three submissions into the process, really trying to rebut any of the economic arguments that the Turkish government put forward. I had a chance to be in Turkey just a week before last to have meetings with ministry officials. They're still, their evaluation is still ongoing. We know there's a lot of, some political underpinnings in this investigation. There's still a tremendous amount of uncertainty. Our understanding is that this investigation will likely go on for another six months or so. The challenge it creates is that textile mills in Turkey are reluctant to buy US cotton because they don't know if by the time they make the purchase decision and have it landed in Turkey, will there be a duty applied in that interim? So as a result, they're backing off their purchases of US cotton. I think we have to, and perhaps for this committee, continue to just make sure that Turkish officials know that this has a high profile within the United States, and that they're being watched from a standpoint of how they conduct the investigation, the transparency, and are they following the guidelines for these investigations that are established within the WTO. Thank you, sir.
Chairman Sajid, Ms. Plaskett, five minutes.
Yes, hi. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, panelists. Mr. Crawford, I think we were on the same wavelength, because the same issues that you're interested in were the questions that I was going to ask the witnesses. So I will be very brief and really trying to drive those questions to specific purposes. With regard to the first issue that Mr. Crawford talked about, that being the WTO's and the Chinese government in Turkey when it comes to cotton, if you could tell me, Dr. Adams or even Dr. Hayes, for smaller producers of cotton such as Haiti and the Dominican Republic, how do these, the markets like the Chinese, who do not follow the rules of the WTO quite often, how does that affect them in terms of their production and their pricing?
I think it certainly, if you talk about some of the smaller producers, it creates, you know, it certainly creates a challenge for them getting into the market. And I think, too, one of the things that I haven't really talked about much in this oral testimony that's worth noting, and I made mention of it in the written testimony, is when we talk about, you know, some countries that are looking at a cotton and/or textile industry, one of the challenges that come up is not just what happens within cotton markets, but cotton is one fiber that competes within a global fiber market. And so you really have to look at also what's going on in man-made fiber and specifically polyester. That is another one of those factors that come in, and it's, you know, its reach and its effects are going to be extensive, particularly when you look at the fact that the polyester market globally is about two and a half times the size of the cotton market. And right now, we see polyester prices at about 50 cents a pound in China. So we don't want to lose sight of all those potential implications as well, particularly if you talk about some countries that are trying to get a cotton and textile industry up off the ground.
Well, what about other natural fibers? Do they face the same impediments or have the same issues?
I think it would be, you know, it gets tough, I think, when you talk to some of the other natural fibers. Are those more specialized uses? For example, if you talk about wool or silk, it may be more difficult to say to the extent those are affected. But we certainly know, when we look at a lot of the uses of cotton, that in many cases, polyester comes in and is a direct competitor when we talk about textile production, particularly. That has an impact, especially on demand side.
Okay. The other question I had was regarding this anti-dumping case by the government of Turkey. And we talked about this, and there's a theory that this is potentially a retaliation against trade cases and the US market and how we operate, particularly when it comes to cotton. But I know that my own district, the Virgin Islands, is constantly getting threats from other Caribbean nations with regard to rum and how we utilize rum and the subsidies and the support that the US government gives us. My question is really focused on, with the WTO cases that come forward, do you find, any of you, Dr. Hayes, others, Mr. Rooney, has the US government been supportive of protecting US markets and US industry when other countries attempt to use the WTO as kind of a way to strong-arm US markets because of the subsidies that the United States is able to provide? I stumped you guys. I love this.
Well, we, in sugar, we've not brought cases against the many countries that subsidize because we do have import quotas that prevent them from damaging our market. When we did go to our government with complaints about Mexico, I think the US government came through very well in finding that there was injury from Mexico and in finding that there was a major amount of dumping and subsidizing there. So our experience has been positive. I think that we've consistently found the US government to be very receptive to what our concerns are. There are limits on how much they can achieve in the international arena, but we've always found whatever administration is in place to be very receptive.
Okay, thank you. I yield the balance of my time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
General Leader yields back. Mr. Rousher, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. One follows up on the first. And my first one is this, you know, a lot of times we operate under the theory that if America moves to a complete, total free market, other countries will follow suit. My question for each of you is, has that, do we have any indication that that has ever translated into reality? Dr. Hayes, Dr. Adams, I'm just curious.
I can try. As Mr. Rooney mentioned, the issue with bilateral trade agreements is that they do not influence domestic support policies. So under a free trade agreement, it's possible that those countries could reduce barriers as part of the agreement and then ramp up their domestic supports. And that's why I think this meeting is so important. If those agreements are policed properly, as is occurring right now, their ability to do that is far less. Again, back to the TPP, Japan does not have enough AMS available to protect its producers unless it violates their WTO agreement. And the same will be true for Vietnam. So the policing is as important as the agreements themselves.
Dr. Adams? Excuse me. I think, too, when we look at it from cotton's perspective, you know, we're not seeing that. I mean, as US support has declined, we don't see it declining in other countries. We always look at the WTO as being a multilateral effort to try to level that playing field. And this has been alluded to in some of the previous discussion. One of the challenges we have is that as we look at some of the text that's on the table, the requirements of developed countries are more stringent than the requirements on developing countries. So even to live up to the letter of those agreements would still probably allow the developing countries to provide more support and doesn't bring them down to the same level as developed countries.
Sir Rousher, thank you for that question. I think it's important to note, there is, in trade policy, this notion of moral suasion, that if we would just eliminate our subsidies, other countries would get in line and follow suit. There's absolutely no evidence that that's ever happened. If we give up our policies unilaterally, it's just a signal to take advantage of us, to send subsidized goods in to replace ours. So that's why we emphasize that it's got to be done multilaterally and simultaneously. If we try to lead the way, I think we'd just be destroyed in the process.
I just want to echo, and thank you for the question, Congressman. We see ourselves in that same place, in which we are asked on a regular basis to do a unilateral disarmament, whether it's lowering our tariffs through this TPP agreement, while we don't necessarily receive the same treatment from other countries. And certainly, we have actually moved away from price supports, and we have a much more market-friendly programs. We are not seeing that in other countries.
My follow-up is for cotton and for sugar. If you can, at your discretion, pick your primary competitor or the one that you've got the most concern about at this point in time, and explain to us what their support structure is and how it's different from ours and how it's adversely affected our producers here at home. I'll start with Dr. Adams.
All right. Thank you. Well, I think as we went through the testimony, I highlighted a few of those, and I'll just go back and reiterate a couple. And I think we talk about it specifically from the standpoint of a competitor to US cotton. The competitor that's out there on the US cotton is India. They're an exporting country. They're the largest producer. They're maintaining that minimum support price that equates to somewhere between 70 and 80 cents per pound in order to keep that land in cotton production, and it allows them to be an exporter. The other thing we've seen is they'll be very aggressive in pricing. So they will come in, and you'll see similar qualities offered, two or three or four cents less than US cotton. So I think they have, excuse me, that creates a number of challenges just from that standpoint. You know, we've talked about China. China's a significant customer of US cotton, but certainly how they manage those stocks going forward is going to be a challenge. Their focus on man-made fiber is a challenge as well. And then in the near term, you know, going back just Turkey, creating basically a trade barrier that there's no economic rationale for is something that's dampening the market right now.
And just quickly on sugar, it would be Mexico is our competitor under NAFTA for our market. And what we've seen in Mexico recently is 2001, that Mexican mills were in a lot of trouble. They were threatening to go out of business, and the government stepped in and expropriated half the mills in Mexico. And that government ownership has continued till today. It's smaller now. They've been able to sell off some of those mills. But for years and years, particularly once NAFTA phased in, the biggest sugar producer and exporter in Mexico was the Mexican government. That's not exactly ideal free trade. We're trying to compete, and I think the Department of Commerce has shown that about 40% of Mexican grower revenues are based on government support in the cases that we just brought.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My time's expired.
Jim, your time expired. Mr. Aguilar, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank all of you for your research that clearly demonstrates that other countries are subsidizing many of their agricultural industries above the WTO limits. Dr. Hayes, in response to your previous question, you were talking about the policing ability in this kind of investigative, what I'm going to say, kind of investigative efforts. Are there more that this committee and the government can do to support the investigative efforts to make a strong case to the WTO that American farmers are at an economic disadvantage?
Well, this hearing is a huge effort, as was the hearing in June, so I think we all appreciate that. The next step would be to take one of these countries to the WTO, and that's a decision that will be made elsewhere. But I think that the people who will make that decision would be influenced by your opinions.
Any other comments about kind of investigative next steps and things that we can do to help these efforts?
Well, again, you're right. As Dr. Hayes said, this hearing raises the profile and I think speaks to what's going on in other countries, because I think sometimes there becomes an impression that agricultural programs are only present in the United States, are predominantly present in the United States, but they're basically present in essentially every country that has an agricultural program.
Yeah, I think it's clear, Congressman, that food is important, and every country's going to try to maintain food security. And they're going to become very protective of their farmers and their consumer food supplies. And that's why I believe that countries are most reluctant to reduce their agricultural subsidies because of the importance to them of the rural communities and food supply to their people. It's a very tough problem.
I appreciate it. One more question. You've talked a little bit about kind of EU from the dairy perspective. Could I ask you to expand a little bit more on the dairy certificate requirement that India has in place? I understand that it's created substantial barriers to US dairy exporters, and do you have any insights on what we can do to support our farmers and to help them meet these requirements?
Thank you, Congressman. Absolutely. In addition to actually finding a number of problems with the EU subsidization, they also have changing a number of different rules on SPS. With respect to India, we have actually tried, this administration have actually tried a number of times, even the president discussed this issue with the Prime Minister of India, and India still refuses to bring a specific issue with respect to some of the elements that are not sound science that are presenting on this health certificate. Some of them are very related to their own culture and how they treat cows. And basically, we are trying to find a solution. There is a new government in India. The US government is trying to address this issue, but we certainly need the support, and we ask this committee to help us with... and we ask this committee to help us with the Food and Drug Administration, and USDA, and USDR, to find a solution with respect to how we can export to India.
Any others?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'll yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, back. Mr. Abraham, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for my tardiness. U.S. sugar policy has historically been attacked by groups that buy the sugar, often because they want access to foreign subsidized dump sugar. Does this mean that they generally embrace the foreign subsidiaries in dumping?
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. It is very odd. Major multinational companies, food companies that oppose sugar policy, claim to be free traders. And yet, I think you're absolutely right, that when they oppose U.S. sugar policy, they call for unilateral disarmament of U.S. sugar policy, what they're essentially arguing is that they should have access to dumped subsidized foreign sugar. And that seems to be antithetical to genuine free trade.
Has this hurt the U.S. sugar industry?
Yes, sir. I believe that it has, because they have brought constant pressure on us, on Congress, to minimize U.S. sugar policy to the greatest extent they can. They've been successful in keeping our support level at about the same level as it's been since the mid-1980s. So there is constant pressure that we have to try to withstand.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, what's China going to do with all their cotton stockpiles that they're holding? And what's going to happen if they decide to sell off in a bunch?
That is a big question, and in fact, at a meeting earlier this year in China, at a conference I had the pleasure to attend, there were several speakers from China that openly, frankly, discussed that question and just the challenge it creates for them. They did offer, what was it, I think they made available roughly 6 to 8 million bales through an auction process earlier this year. That occurred in July and August. The challenge was, though, that at the end of the auctions, they had managed to sell only about 260,000 bales after making available 6-plus million bales. The price they were offering it at was, frankly, I think it was a combination of a price being still in the upper 90 cent range, and the fact that it was cotton that was from either 2011 or 2012. So you had old cotton offered at a high price. Textile mills were not willing to purchase it. So they basically came out of those auctions in much the same place they were before the auctions occurred. I don't know if there is an answer yet, because it does depend on the timing of the sales, the eventual price, and are there textile mills in China that want to purchase that cotton? It's a challenge they've got to deal with. Unfortunately, I think it's going to be with us for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield back.
Ladies and gentlemen, back. Mr. Ashford, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Hayes, a question for you. First of all, then I'll get into more substance. I'm wondering if you can guarantee that my freshman son at Iowa State is in class this morning? If you could check and get back to me on that. I personally am not able to verify it, but thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, for that. It was just something I had to get off my chest. Anyway, could I, I mean, one of the, in my state in Nebraska, obviously, where we export a lot of corn, soybeans, and beef, the criticism, there are many positives that we hear in Nebraska about the benefits of TPP, and quite frankly, of NAFTA, and our ability to export additional grain products and beef products throughout the NAFTA area. To those who say, basically, that NAFTA really hasn't been a benefit to our grain farmers and our beef producers in Nebraska, and that TPP won't either, I realize it's a relatively general question, but what would be your response to that?
I don't track the sugar market or the fruit and vegetable market, and I suspect that if I did, my answer would be different, but it's been unambiguously good for the kind of products we grow in the Corn Belt. Mexico is a huge importer of U.S. meat. Probably 30 to 40% of the meat consumed down there is imported, and that has skyrocketed since NAFTA. And even in Eastern Canada, we actually export quite a bit of meat, too. So I think we learn in our introductory freshman courses that free trade is good, and I tend to believe in that. And NAFTA was a solid, well-structured free trade agreement.
Right. And then, as we look forward to TPP from our area, from Nebraska, and I agree with you that NAFTA has been a significant benefit to our producers, how do you see that TPP impacting what already has evolved in NAFTA?
Well, Japan has import duties of 45% on beef, and depending on how you measure it, maybe 30 to 40% on pork. And they go to 10%, and then for beef, close to zero. The Japanese beef and pork industry simply cannot survive if they're competing against U.S. product. And as they reduce production and as their consumers eat more, the U.S. is in a really good position to meet those markets. The other competing country is Europe, and it does not have the ability to ship chilled product into those countries. So Japan is there, and then Vietnam is a poor country, but they're eliminating all of their duties on their products of relevance to the Midwest over about 10 years. And it's 19 million hungry people who are entrepreneurial, and in my sense, this agreement will make them wealthy. And instead of developing their own value-added livestock industries, a lot of that will be imported if these agreements are enforced as designed.
Right, thanks very much. And my last question, from an economics perspective, and this is, I'm sure, difficult to speculate on necessarily, but on the price side, the feedback, of course, the question we get is, you know, Brad, is this going to help us on the price of our product? And what's your general comment on that, TPP now?
I watch the futures markets, and I can tell when we're going to have a good month for exports. By the way, our export statistics are two months out of date, but the futures market is up to the minute because the people in those companies taking the orders need to buy the product. And I can tell when we're exporting a lot because the futures market is, and the cash markets are up. Even though the U.S. is huge in terms of demand and supply, a small perturbation caused by a new export order can significantly influence price.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Ladies and gentlemen, back, and good luck with that son going to class. Mr. King, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank the witnesses for your testimony and the time and the commitment you make to these issues. I would first reflect on the statement made by Mr. Peterson with regard to countries that have emerged declaring themselves to be developing nations. And I wanted to point out a little narrative. Sitting down in Brazil with the U.S., or excuse me, with the Brazilian Minister of Trade, who said to us in a square diplomatic seating with the members of the House and Senate there, he said, "We have won the agricultural trade war with the United States. It will be quite impossible to compete with us." That told me a couple of things, but one of them was, they don't understand Americans. You don't tell us it's quite impossible to compete with us. I want to make that point, and perhaps that'll echo its way down to Brazil and maybe help in a little way to start to remove that label. But I wanted to also say to Mr. Rooney that your presentation on the proportions of the markets, on the sugar markets, I thought was excellent, and it's some of the things that I have looked at for some time reinforced here. It tells us how difficult it is to compete in a global market when you have state-sponsored subsidies taking place in that way. But it brings me around to this question. If people are hungry in the world, and that's always been the case, and likely always will be the case, what is the interest of, what is the interest in governments in subsidizing products that diminish the availability of the nutrition available to their citizens?
Well, Congressman, I think it's certainly problematic, because countries do take their food supplies seriously, one would certainly expect, and so they're extremely generous in their ag subsidy supports. Their rural infrastructure depends on it, and their domestic food supplies depend on it. So I think that makes it very, very difficult for us to persuade them to reduce their policies and their subsidies.
Could you anchor that back in, the effort on the part of their ag producers within their countries lobbying for their trade protectionism?
Say that again, Congressman, quick.
Okay. Could you anchor this back in countries that are strongly subsidizing their food production? Could you anchor that in the lobbies of their farmers and their ranchers and lobbying for trade protectionism for their particular trade?
Yeah, certainly, their lobbying efforts are very strong. It would seem very successful, and it's hard for us to compete on that level. It's hard for us to compete against those foreign subsidies. I totally agree with you that we could compete, our American farmers could compete with any country on a level playing field, but the ag lobbies in those countries are strong and ineffective.
Let's say if we got to that place that you put out there that maybe characterizes an ideal situation for trade, to abolish the subsidies for sugar globally, if that happened, well, let me take it another way. If that happened in the United States and not in the rest of the world, what would happen to that land that's in sugar production in the United States today?
We would be knocked out of production. I think a limited amount of that land could shift to other crops. Our beet producers tend to be diversified in wheat, corn, and soybeans, but then it's a question of whether we need wheat, corn, and soybeans more acre to that. Our cane areas tend to be a monoculture, and in the state of Hawaii, for example, three of the four islands there have gone out of sugar because of flat pricing over the years, and for the most part, there's nothing on that land.
That's, I wanted to hear that. Thank you, I appreciate that. And then, Dr. Adams, I'll ask you a little bit differently. I used to have this discussion with some of the now-retired members of this committee, and I'm asked this question of you. We're subsidizing food production in many categories in the United States, but if the cotton operations in the United States were shut down in a similar fashion, say, lack of subsidy in a world market that oversubsidizes, so your cotton producers could no longer compete, what crops would those fields go to?
I think when we look, and we can just take it regionally, I think when we look at the southeastern United States, we have, most of our cotton producers are diversified there. Primary competing crops are where you'd see those acres likely shift to, would probably be peanuts as the first place. You'd see you pick up some, maybe some soybeans and corn. In the mid-south or Delta region, those acres would be most likely shifting to corn, soybeans, maybe a little bit of wheat.
Is the Corn Belt growing down into the cotton regions?
We have seen, I think particularly as you look at it following down the Mississippi River, you see a lot more corn and soybeans in those areas than you did several years ago. I think a challenge comes in Texas, where you have so many of the acres that are devoted to cotton, they're not as suitable to other crops, there are fewer alternatives, maybe a little bit of grain or grain sorghum or wheat, but it would be, it'd be a real challenge on them, because you might just see those acres go out of production.
Thank you. And if the chairman would indulge me, I have a short question for Dr. Hayes.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Hayes, your review of the Trans-Pacific Partnership, could you tell us, in summary, the market access that we would gain versus the market access that we would grant with regard to ag products?
Well, I can only speak for the ag products I'm familiar with, and we don't really restrict the importation of those products into the U.S. We're natural exporters. For beef, the duties go from about 45% down to 10%, and stay there for Japan, for pork. The duties, the current gate price is the equivalent of about a 35% import duty, and it goes to practically zero over a 15-year period. And then in Vietnam, which is very land scarce, both of those duties go to zero over 10 years. And for Malaysia, it's immediate access for our products.
Ms. Lehondra Shal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to thank the panel for being before the committee today, and I'm going to actually do, unfortunately, what too many of us do, which is, and fortunately both, focusing on the issues in our districts, which means that sometimes we're repeating some of the information that you've heard already and asking you to delve in a little bit deeper on some of the issues. So I want to go to Mr. Costaneda, and I want to talk a little bit more about dairy. And I want to highlight for you that in my state, the dairy industry, which you probably already know, New Mexico, is a huge economic driver and the leading agricultural economic driver, with export sales reaching about 125 million in 2012. According to the New Mexico State University, the total economic, then, impact of the dairy industry in my state is about 1.8 billion, and that's a 2014 number. We're currently ranked ninth in the nation for milk production and fifth in the nation for cheese production. We have about 150 dairies, and we have the largest average size, herd size, about 2,300-plus cows, which is, as you know, significantly higher than what the average is, about 187. And as you're, in your testimony, and you've highlighted in some of the questions and answers, that it's becoming more difficult for U.S. dairy producers to compete in the international market when other countries are subsidizing and continue to ramp up their dairy subsidies. So it's not only the old problem that we were dealing with in terms of this subsidies, so that they can unfairly deal with the price of milk in the international market, but they continue to ramp that up, furthering, or further hampering our ability to support our own dairy exports in a meaningful way. So I want you to talk a little bit more about that, but I want you, if you can, is there any differentiation about herd size? And is there something that we can do as policymakers that looks to those benefits for states like New Mexico that helps us compete more effectively, perhaps?
Thank you so much, Congressman, for that question. And as you stated perfectly, the industry in New Mexico has been a very good example. We are growing in most of the states in the United States, and one of the reasons is because trade agreements that have done a good job in being a fair trade agreement, a balanced trade agreement, have promoted that. And NAFTA, as to the question of Mr. Ashford, has been tremendous success from the Mexican side of the United States. Mexico is today our number-one market, and New Mexico is taking advantage, specifically on the plant in New Mexico, that actually are exporting a lot of cheese to that country. In general, our number-one problem that we're encountering is this border protections and, of course, increasing additional aid in Europe. We are now very dependent of international markets. So every single impact or every single action by other governments to prevent imports of our dairy products, it certainly goes back to ultimately the price that is paying to dairy farmers. And that certainly is impacting the size of farms. Farmers want to grow, and in Mexico in particular, there has been a lot of expansion, as well as in Texas. And those farms are actually producing primarily for the export market. So this is why it's so critical, and what the committee can do...
But then they're also really at risk, these large herds and large farms, if we don't...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I'm going to ask you, with the time I have left, that in the border security, border protections, in New Mexico in particular, you know, we've created kind of a trade center, it's called Santa Teresa, that really helps us in the context of moving our exports and imports across the border. Are there things specific to that investment that you see that would make a difference for us to continue to compete and solidify that export market with Mexico?
And specifically, I think, is supporting our work with the different regulatory agencies in the United States, like AFIS or the Food and Drug Administration. The Food and Drug Administration is an agency that has jurisdiction over dairy, and part of the problem is that they don't have an export angle. They are obviously reminding us that they don't have, their role is not to necessarily look at export side. So anything that the committee and others can do to help us enhance the budget of the Food and Drug Administration to support more exports, because as we have discussed before with respect to India and other countries, a lot of times, we have issues and problems with respect to finding the right time and the right resources to negotiate this health certificate.
Thank you very much. I'll yield back.
Ladies and gentlemen, time expired. Mr. Yoho, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to pick up where Congressman King left off when we was talking about, you know, what happens to that land, you know, whether it's sugarbeets or cane or, you know, cotton or one of the other commodities, you know, it goes fallow in a lot of those cases. But more importantly, what's after that? You know, the infrastructure that produces or refines those products, like the sugar mills or, you know, the cotton gins, they go out of business, and we've seen that happen with the U.K. When they got away from their subsidy programs, their market collapsed, it killed jobs... When they got away from their subsidy programs, their market collapsed, it killed jobs, and it weakens their economy. Everything we do from this point, from the federal government, should be make America stronger, not just militarily but economically. And if we're strong economically, people benefit in this country. So we always got to keep that in mind. And Dr. Hayes, you brought up, or this is something I think often gets overlooked, is that in the debate when the US, we decoupled the farm policies from production back in '96, and we've been working to get more and more away from that. And I've talked to my producers, whether it's in some type of crop or dairy, they said, "Man, we'd love to get the federal government out of this as much as we can." And this goes back to Mr. Roney. And I appreciate your presentation. I think you're spot on. You know where I stand on that, zero to zero. And I had the good fortune of being in Mexico November of 2014, and we were with the Minister of Finance who negotiated NAFTA. And we got him to admit they did dump sugar on our market, and Chairman Royce was there. It was a wonderful time. And I'm glad to see that you guys have stood strong, and there's so much misconception about what the sugar subsidy is. And we understand it's the price or the loan program, and it's not paid out a dime, zero zilch, nada, until they dump that sugar on the market. And that's something we need to take and let people understand. And so I guess my question is, when we get into these multinational trade negotiations, and we're going through that now, and Dr. Hayes, you hit on this with Japan and our beef production, that we've got to get in there so we can lower the tariffs over 10, 15 years, depending on what country. But in the meantime, Australia's negotiating with Japan unilaterally. Do you see it would be more beneficial for America, for our competitiveness, to work more on unilateral or bilateral trade agreements with other countries versus getting tied into this big quagmire with all these other countries? And just instead of waiting to get the perfect, just move on and start making these negotiations? Just, I guess that's open for everybody.
Well, I'll respond first. I'm pessimistic about the WTO. You've got over 100 countries-
I'm glad to hear you say that.
And it just takes one or two countries to ruin the situation. But take a bilateral. Let's say the bilateral we had with Korea. We were lukewarm about actually implementing that until we realized that if we didn't, the Europeans were going to take our markets away. And suddenly we woke up and we were interested in not losing that market. And TPP, and we could walk away from that, but that doesn't stop the Europeans from having a free trade agreement with Japan, which is very close. And it certainly doesn't stop Canada using the TPP to access our markets in Japan. So in a sense, the bilaterals are, the smaller agreements are almost viral. If somebody signs one, then just to keep your market, you have to sign it. Or if you don't sign it, somebody else will take your market share away. So the competitiveness works in favor of these smaller regional agreements and against the multilaterals.
Dr. Adams, you want to weigh in on that?
Well, I would say too, I think from the WTO's perspective, obviously, there'd be benefits if there was a multilateral negotiation. But it's a challenge with it working under a consensus rule, and essentially, one or two countries can block up any negotiations. I think you look historically at the track record for US cotton industry, probably some of the greatest benefits have been more in the unilateral or regional trade agreements. Those have probably had more tangible benefits over the last two or three decades than trying to do something under a broader perspective.
Well, and that's what I see is, you know, we focus on the big picture of TPP. But I think in the meantime, you see other countries like Australia negotiating with Japan. And I think, I'm not hearing any trade agreements working on the side and say, "Well, let's get this done until we can work these other things out." And let's see here. Mr. Roney, you want to weigh in on any of that?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Congressman, and thank you for your support for US sugar farmers. We really appreciate that. The problem with the bilateral and regional agreements, while they can gain some market access by reducing tariffs or increasing quotas, what they never address are the subsidies in those countries. So when we're looking at world market as distorted as sugar, these bilaterals, they don't make any progress on that, on those levels of distortion. So as difficult as it is, and I certainly acknowledge it's very difficult, but the only way to approach that is at the WTO where you do look at domestic supports and export subsidies as well as import access. So it's very difficult, but I think it's the only way to make genuine progress on global subsidies.
Thank you. I'm out of time.
Your ladies' time expired. Mr. Allen, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And of course, we've talked a lot about cotton, and I appreciate your input on that. Of course, that's the largest crop in our district. And it seems to me, and because I'm always looking for solutions, but we've talked about the WTO, and, you know, we need a, we need a solution on how to deal with that. And I'd appreciate hearing from you on that. Because I tell you what the American people are really getting tired of, and our farmers are really getting tired of, is, you know, we got to export 80% of our cotton in my district. The world market now is around 60 cents. Can't make it on 60 cents. We got to send it to China. We got to mix it with their lesser grade of cotton. They're paying their farmers like $1.40. And then we walk into a retail store in this country, and we buy a shirt for 35 bucks, and we're the gorilla in the room as far as consumer products are concerned. How in the world do we deal with that? I mean, it looks like to me that if we don't get, our exposure is the fact that we're out of the textile business, and we're out of the shirt-making business. I mean, somehow, we have to address the end product and the fact that we are buying, what, 80% of the world's goods and services? But yet, we're getting killed on the raw product. That just, that's not good business sense, not a good business deal. Any comments? I'd like to just go down through the panel, and Dr. Hayes, I'll start with you. And, you know, can we think of the, beginning with the end in mind and say, "Okay, wait a minute, this is a way to fix this?"
Well, your comment about 60 cents here and the $1.40 there, that's what this hearing is about, is to, is to tell the Chinese, A, you're not, you committed not to do that, and B, you should stop doing that. And now, if you went back to 60 cents and 60 cents, their cotton producers would cut back on production, which would expand our price.
But then, we can't seem to get them to understand the fact that, okay, if you don't do something about this, you can keep your shirts in China.
That's a good point.
Dr. Adams?
Well, I don't know that I've got any magic answer for you, but you do raise, you do raise an issue that when, you know, we look at the potential economic activity and the economic impact, it goes beyond the farm gate, particularly when we talk about the cotton and textile industries. Excellent point in terms of just the changes that we have seen, the elimination of import quotas over the last, you know, went through a multi-year period of eliminating import quotas on textile products and probably not having the attention to detail as we looked at some of the changes that have occurred in textile policy, both within a multilateral agreement. And unfortunately, we lose that in-use manufacturing. And then you see, you know, market share going to not only countries like China, but countries like Vietnam stepping in and gaining market share as well. I think what we have, I don't know if there's an easy way to undo that other than trying to work to somehow level that playing field and realize it's beyond the farm gate, it's also on the manufacturing side, particularly on the textile side.
Mr. Roney, you got any solutions on this?
Congressman, I wish I did, but I don't. We just have to be really fastidious about how we look at these agreements. And for us, and sugar being an import crop, it's awkward, it's difficult because the US is doing these agreements to try to gain access for information technology and so on. But what do those countries want? Well, they want access to our agricultural market. And so we're always kind of on the chopping block there. So, you know, we certainly don't want to stand in the way of trade agreements to get more access to foreign markets for our country, but we don't want to be the sacrificial lamb in that process.
I would only just add that one of the ways that we can try to resolve this is to provide more funding and resources. We used to be, to USTR, and we used to be a time in which we enforce these trade agreements, and we have actually a number of cases in the WTO. And we actually are not seeing a lot of that. And we certainly would like to have the US government take more of the cases that will help us, all of us.
Well, anything that this House can do to provide a strategy so we can deal with this issue where we're getting the short end of the deal. And like I said, the American people are a little tired of that, and we're seeing that everywhere. Please come to us and let us know how we can help you in your negotiations deal with these problems. I yield back.
Your ladies' time is expired. Mr. Goodlett, five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your holding this hearing, and I appreciate the testimony of all of these witnesses. Ms. Roney, I wanted to direct a question to you. Your testimony, written testimony and your testimony earlier in the hearing, highlighted that many of the top sugar exporters are also top sugar subsidizers. And you have been rightly critical of those subsidy programs. However, one country I noticed to be missing from your list, and that is Australia. According to the USDA's Foreign Agricultural Service, Australia is the world's ninth-largest producer of sugar and the third-largest exporter. However, in recent discussions regarding trade and sugar policy around the world, the assertion has been raised that Australian supports for sugar are quite minimal in comparison to the rest of the world. So I wonder if you could comment on this claim? And then furthermore, could you give an opinion as to how Australia is able to compete in the world market without these subsidies, if they are in fact minimal?
Thank you, Congressman. Australia's subsidies have been relatively small, you know, relative to other countries. But their government has come to their rescue at times when prices are low or there's been weather damage. And they've also had a single-desk cellar, which is of some question under WTO rules, you know, for state trading enterprises. But we also look at how Australia has fared with its relative exposure to world prices, and they've not fared well. Their production has been struggling, it's been down in many years. Their role in the market, in the world market, has been diminished by countries that have continued to subsidize. They've lost out on market share, for example. They used to be the world's second-biggest sugar exporter. Now Thailand is the world's second-biggest sugar exporter by far. And that was entirely through Thai government decisions to set high prices and to encourage exports onto the world market. So Australia, for not coming to the rescue for its producers more than it has, has really suffered from that.
Right, but they're also the third-largest exporter.
Still, declining, but yes, still third.
Third, third is still pretty high, especially when they're the ninth, they're obviously exporting a very large quantity of their sugar if they're ninth in production, but third in exports.
Yes.
The other question I'd like to follow up on with regard to Mr. Peterson is, if you think you have any practical ways to apply pressure to other countries to come to the table to negotiate down the subsidies?
I think in the world of sugar, the promise or the hope would be that as these countries reduce their subsidies, that world prices would rise, that the least efficient producers would fall out of the business. And as world prices rise to reflect the cost of producing sugar, then the most competitive would survive. For some countries like ourselves, we are, who are relatively competitive by world standards, we would welcome that approach. The problem and the obstinance comes from the countries that are not relatively efficient but are really, really committed to their sugar industries and will be reluctant to reduce the supports for them.
Thank you. Let me just ask briefly each of you with regard to the TPP. I know we haven't seen the language yet, but I'm just going to go down, I'll start with you, Dr. Hayes. Your general reaction to how it will treat American agriculture, getting access to these markets or giving up too much access to our markets, do you have a favorable or unfavorable? I don't need you to go into the details, but-
Favorable. I think on cotton fiber, fiber trade should be favorable there. The question mark for us will be what happens with the textile trade? And that's a question yet to be seen in terms of some of the details.
Sure. Mr. Roney?
We're still waiting for the details, as are the others. But at this point, we're optimistic that the amount of additional access granted will not jeopardize the no-cost operation view of sugar policy.
Thank you. Mr. Castaneda?
Yeah, I think that actually we echo Mr. Roney. I think it may be slightly unbalanced if you see what we gave, grant to other countries with what we got. But at the end, we hope, once we see all the details, that perhaps it may be a net positive on the economic overall, but we don't know yet.
I know you were very concerned going into the final negotiations, but were some steps taken there that helped dissuade some of your concerns?
I think that a letter from many members of Congress and many calls from members of Congress help us at the end to prevent a really bad agreement. I think that going into the final, and I think I have heard that dairy was one of the fine, the last issues to be discussed at 5:00 in the morning on Monday of the conclusion of the agreement. So I think that we avoided a really bad agreement. Again, the jury's still out to see how good may be, but it doesn't look like we have this great access into Canada or Japan, which we're looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Your ladies' time is expired. Mr. Newhouse, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having this hearing. I appreciate all of you being here. I'm going to try to get to each one of you, so if you could help me, but keeping your answers at least within my time period of about a minute or so. Mr. Roney, Ronnie, I'm sorry, I got your name.
Roney.
Roney. You kind of reached this subject, so I wanted to follow up with you first. Could you tell, talk a little bit about how domestic support programs used in other countries generally impact commodity production in those countries? Do they go up? Do they go down? And then what, what would you see the effect of that on global production and prices?
Well, classically, what we've seen in the world of sugar is support prices that are generous enough to keep farmers in business and, in many cases, to expand their production. And the problem then becomes when their production expansion goes beyond what their market needs. What do they do with that surplus? Well, they've tended to dump it on the world sugar market for whatever price it would bring. So you have, for example, the European Union, for many, many years, had price supports up around 30, 35 cents per pound that induced tremendous surplus in the European market. And then you were witness to the spectacle of their dumping sugar onto the world market at 10 cents per pound. But their farmers were able to stay in business because they were getting such a generous amount for the sugar they were selling within the EU.
Yeah, it seems like a vicious circle.
Yes.
You just can't get out of it. And it seems to be where we are.
Dr. Hayes, appreciated your testimony. Could you name foreign countries and the commodities they produce that cause us the most problems? In your report, you talked about the wheat study and a potential billion-dollar impact to US farmers. In naming those foreign countries and commodities, could you also talk about what that effect that has on our producers?
I would believe it's China first and then India. And I'll use corn as an example. The current support price in China is about $9.25 a bushel, which is about double the cost that our wheat, our corn could go in there at. So we have, market prices for corn are falling. And if the Chinese consumer could see lower corn prices, they would buy more. If their producers saw lower corn prices, they'd produce less. So that creates a distortion, and it's true for corn and it's true for wheat. And then India, which is more opaque, but the very similar programs-
Corn also in India?
Weed in this case, yeah. And one quick comment, you may notice I have a funny accent. I was born in Europe and farmed there. And it is true that those policies were enormously distorting. But pressure from the US and pressure from economists has gradually resulted in the Europeans backing away from those distortive programs.
Wow, thank you. Well, that leads to my next question. Thank you. And Dr. Adams, could you talk a little bit, and I know just in a minute it's going to be tough, but what actions that we as a country could take in response to subsidies by foreign producers to help US farmers compete in these world markets?
Well, I think as we've, as we have, look at it from cotton's perspective, the WTO is going to be the area where those discussions, that's the venue for where those discussions take place. And in the case of cotton, there was, out of the Bali ministerial, there were dedicated discussions that were specific to cotton. And that's an opportunity, I think, for the discussion to occur to really try to understand what's happening in other countries. And again, I think other countries have a long way to go in terms of their notifications being as current as the United States and as transparent. But in the case of cotton, that's, I think, the venue to start those discussions and to really- to really try to level that playing field.
It seems to have some impact if Dr. Hayes's observations are correct. And Mr. Castaneda, no surprise that our two most important trading partners, as it relates to Dairy Canada and the EU, have significant price supports. Can you talk a little bit about how that impacts our dairy farmers?
Sure. Thank you so much for the question. Just to, and as an example, Russia, when they ban all their imports from the Western world, it impacted the most Europe, because we were still working on a health certificate to see our products into Russia. But what that did is have over 6 billion pounds of milk equivalent that were actually going into the Russian market in Europe, have to actually find a different market. And all that was pretty much dumped into the international markets through aids by the EU. So that gives you a context of how bad the markets can be distorted by situations, primarily from aiding by the EU. And low milk powder prices have actually been all over the world, and has impacted at a certain extent dairy producers that are focused on Class IV and on the powder side. But for the most part, we're doing better here than anywhere else in the world that has a pretty much open market. We're not Canada, we're not North Korea, but actually, if you look at countries, if you look at the different prices, the US actually is doing better than most other countries.
Your lady's time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Your lady's time has expired. One real quick one. Obviously, some of the focus of my comments, opening comments, as well as some of the others, is that enforcement of our deals, whether they're WTO deals, or bilateral, or multilateral, whatever, enforcement of those is an important issue. The cotton issue that Turkey brought, while I don't think there's any empirical evidence at this point, followed very closely on our suit with, or our issue with their dumping of steel. Appears to be a retaliatory issue. Is that a new tactic, or is that tactic been used before, where America's tried to exert her rights against these agreements, and then the reciprocal country triggered something unrelated, but in response to what we've tried to do from an enforcement standpoint?
Well, I'll speak to, in this case, I'm not aware of, you know, necessarily past situations where we've had this much back and forth. But in the case of Turkey, it was, there was a Turkish official who was quoted publicly back in September of 2014, as saying that for each investigation that the US launched, that Turkey would in fact launch three investigations. And then, not a month after that, we saw the investigation launch for cotton. And so now, we unfortunately are caught in the crosshairs of what has become just a back and forth of investigations.
All right. Any of the other three aware of retaliatory things like that, where we've tried to enforce something, and the other country retaliated and something else? All right. I want to thank our panel for being here today. It's been really informative. We've, great succinct answers. Appreciate my colleagues sticking to the five-minute rule. The question about, the good lad asked each of you about TPP, I appreciate that, that was, those were all given in the affirmative, but also given with a caveat that we don't have all the language yet, and that we've got to look at the full deal. Rice, tobacco carve-outs, some other things may not have gone as well, and so all of us are anxiously awaiting the language, or the, to make sure we understand what went on, and so we're still having those conversations. I appreciate each of you highlighting the negative impacts that foreign subsidies are having on US agriculture. Farmers and ranchers across this land compete on an unfair, unlevel playing field in most all of these crops and products that we talked about. And part of the responsibility of that committee is to help the American people understand why we need our team, our safety net that's in place, and we tend to ratchet our safety net down every time we go through one of these, and we're seeing the direct impact that on cotton this time, where we've pushed them pretty much out of it, and the struggles that the cotton industry is having right now across the board. And so I want to thank each of you for your clear statements, and the work you're doing to underwrite or support this narrative that each of my colleagues and I need to be a part of, and that is that unfair competition is just that, it's unfair, and that people who cheat, we need to bring them to task, and whether that's the instructions to our executive branch, or wherever that might be, cheating shouldn't be, you know, we should abide those kind of things that are going on, that hurt Americans and American producers, and ultimately, American consumers. So, under the rules of committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplemental written responses from the witnesses to any question posed by a member. The hearing of the Committee of Agriculture is adjourned. Thank you.